Good evening. This is the Board of County Commissioners Board of Work Session. It is Thursday, August 24th, 2023. It is 6:10 PM. The session is set to go until 7:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're at 3000 Pacific Avenue Southeast, Room 110. This is a special meeting for public virtual attendance. You may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. This is a joint work session. We have the Lacy City Council joining us as well as the Board of County Commissioners. So we will start. I'll introduce the board and then I will pass it to Mayor Ryder so he can do introductions. I'm the Chair of the Board, Carolina Mejia. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Mensah. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. We also have County Manager Ramiro Chavez as well as Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. We really look forward to this. Again, my name is Andy Ryder. I'm the Mayor of Lacy. Let's just go down and introduce yourselves.
Good evening. Rick Wach, City Manager for the City of Lacy.
Robin Vasquez, Lacy City Council.
Malcolm Miller, Lacy Deputy Mayor.
Carolyn Cox, Lacy Council Member.
Ed Kunkel, Lacy City Council.
And I know we have several of our staffs attending remotely and then we have some staff here behind us as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Greenstein and Councilmember Stedman are unable to make it this evening.
Thank you. So the first item of topic on the agenda is the Joint Thurston County-Lacy Joint Plan for UGA.
I believe we have staff from the county and the city that can join this conversation.
Just join us. Join us at the table.
And we can also make room.
Can you sit next to me so I can keep an eye on you?
Perfect. Here we go. I can share my notes with you too.
You got it.
If I'm going astray.
Okay.
We do have a brief slideshow. I don't know if that's possible to be brought up. That one. Not that one.
Do you want the...
It doesn't actually look like it's in there. So, all right. Let's do it without the presentation. Actually, yeah, Grant is on. You might be able to...
They should be able to share the screen, Grant.
Where'd you save it there, Hans?
It's in the County Clerk folder under Presentations for...
Got it. Give me one second. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming here today. You know, it's always, I think, a good time to kind of check in with each other and see how things are going. I know that we have some topics, but then I think there'll be time towards the end to kind of discuss on, you know, how to be better partners with each other. I always appreciated the partnership we've had with the City of Lacy. And I'm not sure if any of the other commissioners would like to add anything to that.
No, I'm actually interested in what's going on in the UGA around Lacy. I guess that's... I'm looking forward to hearing a little bit about that. So thank you very much for being here.
Yes, I'm... Too many screens on a laptop window.
No pressure, Grant.
I can just mime what the graphics are supposed to be as we go along here. But I will say that this is kind of a high-level briefing tonight. We will be coming back to both of you, both groups, later on. We are working through the Planning Commission side of things right now and we do have recommend or they have scheduled a tentative meeting for September 27th where we're going to have public review at that time. So, all right, that looks more promising. So we can actually jump ahead to the next slide. Thank you, Grant, by the way.
Yes.
I did want to throw this graphic up really quickly. We do have a virtual open house running, which is one of our primary modes of community outreach. It's a great resource and it really does a pretty decent job of making what some might call a dense document a little bit more approachable, a little bit more interesting, a little bit more engaging, accessible. So it really breaks it down into more consumable sections with a lot more graphics and a little bit more interactive than a traditional Word document. So that is out there. That is running. It is something that we've been promoting on quite a few different avenues, both virtually and in person at different events. We're getting a lot of great feedback through that. So not only can you learn about the plan, but you can also provide feedback through that site. So that's been something that we've been employing lately and it's having a lot more success than trying to convince people to read a Word document. So did want to point that out really quick and now we can jump into the next slide. So this one is really just a high-level overview of what's kind of changing. So the current plan that's currently in place today is from 2003. So a big component of this one is really just general upkeep. A lot of what was discussed in that 2003 plan is not as relevant as we'd like it to be today. So that includes things like population projections, land use and capacity, things like that that definitely do change over time. And one of the primary roles of the joint plan and how it's supposed to, the document and how it's supposed to be used. So just getting that current to reflect where we're at, where urban growth is at today and then looking forward. So that's general upkeep. And then moving into the next seven there, these are kind of more interesting components that in addition to general updates that we did want to highlight as part of this update itself. So the first one is low-density residential consolidation. Within the City of Lacy, we have already taken the step of consolidating two different low-density residential uses that we have within the city. So it's now just one, which is a zero-to-six low-density residential. That said, within the urban growth area, those two low-density designations, zero-to-three and four-to-six, still both exist. So one of the recommendations that's coming out of this plan is just to, for consistency's sake, to mirror what's already been done in the city. So that's that bullet. And then Martin Way Corridor Study, that was actually going to be...
I thought state law required that to happen. Was it just on the city side and it didn't affect the county? So were you just trying to catch up with state law?
The recent work in the legislature did look at adding more density in the low-density zones, infill middle housing-type units, but it was to be timed with the 2025 updates.
Okay.
They gave time to do that. The City of Lacy has already been working on that effort. Had the current consolidation zone in place in advance, but there are still some tweaks that are going to have to happen to meet the same density requirements that state law does now require.
Okay.
We're ahead of the curve.
Correct. There we go. So Martin Way Corridor Study, we did just want to incorporate this study as it really does impact a significant portion of the urban growth area and the City of Lacy and how they interact. I believe Allison's actually going to talk about that later, so I won't go into too much into detail. But short story is that there's a lot of great findings and recommendations that came out of that that we want to capture and reflect within the joint plan as it moves forward. The next one on that list is consistent sewer requirements. So again, our current plan is pretty dated and what we want to do is update that to reflect current updates that have happened both in the county and in the city. One of the primary drivers behind this is that the City of Lacy urban growth area was identified as the highest contamination risk for drinking water from septic within, actually, Thurston County. So a big motivator there is really transition as many septic tanks to sewer as possible. So...
How was that identified?
One more time?
How was that identified?
So there was actually a regional septic summit, which is something I never thought I would say. But yeah, so that was actually studied in depth. We do have some maps. I didn't include them in this presentation, but when we come back to you guys, I can definitely share that.
There were two summits, one and two.
So it was a pretty robust study that actually took place and actually looked at it at a county scale. And there's a map that highlights different zones that are more vulnerable to contamination. And that really just has to do with the date that those initial septic tanks were installed and kind of aging and where they're at today and kind of what that replacement timeline looks like. So that's...
And the City of Lacy has actually implemented a septic sewer conversion program. And so that's already starting to be built into our rates. Of course, you know, we're, right now, we're looking at, you know, trying to convert as many septic systems within the City of Lacy first. But there are some areas that are really, if you look on the maps, are shows of some lot contamination. And so it'd be great to continue to work with the county to identify those areas and maybe work on some joint, you know, a strategy to get them converted as well.
And that, just kind of add on to that too, is looking at the soil types out in, especially the eastern portion, Tangle Thompson Place, it's the age of septic systems because a lot of those developments came in the 60s and 70s. So they're very old systems, but not a lot of area if they do fail to replace them. And then also in addition to just, you know, ground, but also surface water contamination as well. So trying to set up that rate structure so we can start building up some reserves to start looking at in the future that conversion program and identifying those higher-risk areas, areas that are closer to existing sewer lines so we can logically expand. But also, there's been some conversations pre-pandemic about, regionally, about how to deal with the septic system issue and trying to look at a regional solution for the area as well.
Do you have proximity charges?
I'm going to need to refer to Scott Ager, Public Works Director.
Is there any proximity charges? Because when you have a sewer line in front of a property, you know, always encourage the property owners to hook into sewer. Is there a proximity charge? Is there any subsidies the city provides to that conversion?
So right now, a lot will reduce its connection fee by 50%. So, you know, we have a program like that to encourage people to connect if there is a line in front of their home. That's a significant reduction. So that, in terms of incentives, that's the biggest incentive that's available right now for those kind of folks. But what we found, the council agreed to fund the installation of a sewer line along Shaden Lane, which fronts X Lake. And we find that only about 5% to 10% of people will take advantage of connecting to sewer even with that because if they're on septic, they're not paying a monthly sewer fee. There is a charge, you know, they have to pay to construct, connect, and so they forego that.
And the decision what we made in Lacy is whenever we do the septic sewers, we're going to be paying for the whole hole. It's the only way you can get people to convert, right? If you even put $500 on it, they'll say no. And so that was the strategy we implemented at our Capital City Golf Course. And I think it's the strategy we're going to be continuing to use. But right now, we're paying off that portion first and then we're going to, you know, once that's done, we're going to take a look at our next area of where we're going to convert.
We had a stronger motivation for that one, though.
Yeah, we had lots.
Scott just mentioned, you know, that a homeowner may not want to hook up now because of those...
Because they will not be approved.
Right.
The only option to fix that failing septic will be to connect to the...
I believe we did the same approach at Woodard Creek. Yeah, fully paid.
Do folks in the UGA have the ability in the unincorporated UGA to hook onto your system?
Yeah, we're responsible. Well...
Within our service area and...
Yeah, and actually, right now, there's a ULID in Tomya Estates, which is in the UGA outside, currently outside of the city limits. So we formed a ULID, but the city's... ...
I'm I'm not sure if any of the other commissioners would like to add anything to that.
No, I'm 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 actually interested in what's going on in the UGA around Lacey. I guess that's I'm looking forward to hearing a little bit about that. So, thank you very much for being here. Did you find it great?
Yes, I'm too many screens on a laptop window.
No pressure, Grant.
I can just mime what the what the graphics are supposed to be. Does it go along here? But I will say that this is kind of a high level briefing tonight. We will be coming back to both of you, both groups later on. We are working through the planning commission side of things right now. And we do have recommend or they have scheduled a tentative meeting for September twenty seventh where we're gonna have public review at that time. But yeah, so, all right, that that looks more promising. So, we could actually jump ahead to the next slide. Thank you, Grant, by the way.
Yes.
I did wanna throw this graphic up really quickly. We do have a virtual open house running, which is one of our primary modes of community outreach. It's a great resource and it really does a pretty decent job of making what some might call a dense document, a little bit more approachable, a little bit more interesting, a little bit more engaging, accessible, so it really breaks it down into more consumable sections with a lot more graphics and a little bit more interactive than a traditional Word document. So, that is out there, that is running. It is something that we've been promoting on quite a few different avenues, both virtually and in person at different events. We're getting a lot of great feedback through that. So, not only can you learn about the plan, but you can also provide feedback through that site. So, that's that's been something that we've been employing lately and it's it's having a lot more success than trying to convince people to read a Word document. So, did wanna point that out really quick and now we can jump into the next slide. So, this one is really just a high level overview of what's kinda changing. So, the current plan that's currently in place today is from two thousand and three. So, a big component of this one is really just general upkeep. A lot of what was discussed in that two thousand and three plan is not as relevant as we'd like it to be today. So, that includes things like population projections, land use, like land use and capacity, things like that, that definitely do change over time and one of the primary roles of the joint plan and how it's supposed, the document and how it's supposed to be used. So, just getting that current to reflect where we're at, where urban growth is at today and then looking forward. So, that's general upkeep. And then moving into the next seven there, these are kinda more interesting components that in addition to general updates that we did wanna highlight as part of this update itself. So, the first one is low density residential consolidation. Within the city of Lacey, we have already taken the step of consolidating two different low density residential uses that we have within the city. So, it's now just one, which is a zero to six low density residential. That said, within the urban growth area, those two low density designations, zero to three and four to six still both exist. So, one of the recommendations that's coming out of this plan is just to, for consistency's sake, to mirror what's already been done in the city. So, that's that bullet. And then Martin Way Corridor Study, that was actually gonna be.
I thought state law required that to happen. Was it just on the city side and it didn't affect the county? So, were you just trying to catching up with state law?
The the recent work in the legislature did look at adding more density in the low density zones, infill middle housing type units, but it was to be timed with the twenty twenty five updates.
Okay.
They gave time to do that. The city of Lacey has already been working on that effort to have those, the current consolidation zone in place in advance. But there are still some tweaks that are gonna have to happen to meet the same density requirements that state law does now require.
Okay.
Well, we're ahead of the curve.
We're ahead of the curve, yeah.
There we go. So, Martin Way Corridor Study. We did just want to incorporate this study as it really does impact a significant portion of the urban growth area and the city of Lacey and how they interact. I believe Allison's actually gonna talk about that later, so I won't go into too much into detail. But short story is that there's a lot of great findings and recommendations that came out of that that we want to capture and reflect within the joint plan as it moves forward. The next one on that list is consistent sewer requirements. So, again, our current plan is pretty dated and what we wanna do is update that to reflect current updates that have happened both in the county and in the city. One of the primary kinda drivers behind this is that the city of Lacey urban growth area was identified as the highest contamination risk for drinking water from septic within actually Thurston County. So, a big motivator there is really transition as many septic tanks to sewer as possible, so.
How was that identified?
One more time?
How was that identified?
So, there was actually a regional septic summit, which is something I never thought I would say. But yeah, so that was actually studied in depth. We do have some maps, I didn't include them in this presentation, but when we come back to you guys, I can definitely share that.
There were two summits, one and two.
So, it 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 was a pretty robust study that actually took place and actually looked at it at a county scale. And there's a a map that highlights different zones that are more vulnerable to contamination and that really just has to do with the date that those initial septic tanks were installed and kinda aging and where they're at today and kind of what that replacement timeline looks like. So, that's that's one.
And the city of Lacey has actually implemented a septic sewer conversion program. And so, that's already starting to be built into our rates. Of course, you know, we're at, right now, we're looking at, you know, trying to convert as many septic systems within the city of Lacey first. But there are some areas that are 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 really, if you look on the maps, are are shows of some lot contamination. And so, it'd be great to continue to work with the county to identify those areas and maybe work on some joint, you know, you know, a strategy to to get them converted as well.
And that, and just kind of add on to that, too, is is looking at it's it's the soil types out in especially the eastern portion, Tango Thompson Place. It's the age of septic systems, cuz a lot of those developments came in the sixties and seventies, so they're very old systems, but not a lot of area if they do fail to replace them. And then also in addition to just, you know, ground our, but also surface water contamination as well. So, trying to set up that rate structure so we start building up some reserves to to start looking at in the future that that conversion program and identifying those higher risk areas. Areas that are closer to existing sewer lines so we can logically expand. But also, there's been some conversations pre pandemic about regionally, about how to deal with the septic system issue and trying to look at a regional solution for the area as well.
Do you have proximity charges?
I'm gonna need to refer to Scott Scott Ager, Public Works Director.
Is there any proximity charges? Because when you have a sewer line in front of a property, you know, always the encourage the property owners to hook into sewer. Is that a proximity charge? There is any subsidies the city provides to that conversion?
So, right now, a lot will reduce its connection fee by fifty percent. So, you know, we have a program like that to encourage people to connect if there is a line in front of their home. So, that's a significant reduction. So, that in terms of incentives, that's the biggest incentive that's available right now for those kinda folks. But what we found, the council agreed to fund the installation of sewer line along Shaden Lane, which fronts X Lake. And we find that only about five to ten percent of people will take advantage of connecting to sewer even with that. Because if they're on septic, they're not paying a monthly sewer fee. There is a charge, you know, they have to pay to construct, connect, and so they they forego that.
And and the decision what we made in in Lacey is is whenever we do the septic sewers, we're gonna be paying for the whole hole. It's it's the only way you can get people to convert, right? If you if you even put five hundred dollars on it, they'll say no. And so, we that was the strategy we implemented at our Capital City Golf Course. And I think it's the strategy we're gonna be continuing to use. But right now, we're paying off that portion first and then we're gonna, you know, once that's done, we're gonna take a look at our next area of where we're gonna convert.
Well, we had a stronger motivation for that one, though.
Yeah, we had lots, we did.
Scott just mentioned, you know, that a homeowner may not wanna hook up now because of those, but if their septic does fail, there's another resource for them besides, you know, not being able to replace.
Because they will not be approved.
Right, they're close proximity to sewer line.
Yeah, the only option to fix that failing septic will be to connect to the sewer.
I believe we did the same approach at Woodard Creek. Yeah, fully paid.
Do folks in the UGA have the ability in the unincorporated UGA to hook on to your system?
Yeah, we're responsible.
Well, in our, within our service area and.
Yeah, and actually, right now, there's a ULID in Tomya Estates, which is in the UGA outside, currently outside of the city limits. So, we formed a ULID, but the city's, you know, putting in more than a million dollars towards that to help help reduce the cost to the residents for for their share of the ULID. So, yes, every everybody within UGA has the same access to those kinda benefits that people in the city do.
Scott, just for the benefit of people watching from home, ULID.
It's a utility local improvement district. So, it's a, it's it's just a some, it's a tool, it's a financial tool mostly allowed by the state where if a group of residents wanna go together, form a you, a a local improvement district, they're agreeing to pay the cost of the improvement. So, then the agency will design it, build it, and then assess those people the cost over typically a ten, fifteen, twenty year period of time. But in this case, you know, the city is paying that down about a third.
And that that same benefit comes to the UGA people as well.
Correct. And that this specific case is in UGA.
Yeah, we put a million dollars of our own funds into to lower it, to make it more feasible for them, cuz we knew how important it was for them to convert to.
And and I think you touched base on this, Scott, and this for the benefit of the UN public. The service area is not limited to the municipal boundaries.
Yeah.
Service area goes beyond the municipal boundaries.
Right, so.
Which is it's it's not just creates a little bit of a confusion.
Sure. And in our case, it goes all the way down to Niskali and 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 so.
So, even outside of the.
Outside of our UGA, we still have.
In certain circumstances.
In certain circumstances.
To clarify for sewer, the the Lacey Sewer Utility Service Area is the entire UGA, as with Olympia's entire UGA. It's slightly different for water because there are other purveyors like Thurston PUD there as well. So, the slight difference between water and sewer, but with sewer, it is the entire UGA.
I just wanna clarify, too, if there's an extension outside of UGA, it's for special emergency circumstances cuz typically sewer cannot be extended outside of UGAs cuz that would create urban development outside your urban growth areas.
Yeah.
That's a big deal and it's that's one of the big questions that.
Yeah, and a lot of what was discussed, so there are recommendations on looking at that more in depth and also looking at additional ways to incentivize that conversion, both financial and potentially upzoning as far as a range of different tools that we could implement to really kind of create more of an incentive to really transition folks from septic to sewer. So, that's kinda that section within the joint plan. And then we have, the next one is agricultural protections. And really what this gets at is we do have a few different locations within the urban growth area that are currently operating in in some kind of an agricultural capacity. And at the same time, there are development pressures that are coming along and kind of putting pressure on those lands. So, the policies that we're putting in place are protecting the existing agricultural uses as they are today. And the recommendation in the plan is to potentially transition them to an urban holdings area, which prevents any kind of development or residential conversion and alleviate some of that residential pressure until such time that sewer would actually be available at those locations. So, it's not a smaller, kind of more rural rural type of development, but it's more of an intentional thing at the time that, number one, that agricultural use is no longer active or taking place there. So, as long as they're doing whatever that activity is, they're allowed to definitely continue to keep doing that. But if that time comes when it is available to convert and sewer is available, then we can look at it. And it just gives us a few more tools to be kind of involved in that process, so it doesn't happen piecemeal is really what we're looking at there.
Big are those agricultural zones? Is there specific acreage that it has to be by?
So, I think in total, we have around two hundred, I'm going off of memory here, so I might be wrong on this. I think we have right around two hundred and seventy one acres in the urban growth area.
It's in the McAllister Geoglottis next.
Moon and Gordon Geoglottis.
Yeah.
Yeah, so and that's things like Christmas tree farms, blueberry farms. I think there's a couple of kind of more hobby kind of farm type things going on. So, there there are a few of them, but they are kinda scattered throughout the urban growth area.
Is there a minimum acreage requirement?
Not that I.
For the classification.
For the classification, yeah.
Is there a minimum acreage?
Not for agricultural and those were originally designated that because of that existing use with the original plans in the early nineties. But some of the challenges is 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 agricultural uses with inside urban growth areas is not consistent with the Growth Management Act. And so, we're trying to clean up some of those disparities, but also honor what they're currently doing on those properties. So, we're not, so they're able to be grandfathered in as long as they continue that use. But at some point, when they're, when they look at reassessment, what's the appropriate designation for the time when that when that time arrives?
But ideally, I know maybe you'll talk about this next, especially in the sensitive areas, that should not be in our U UGA. That should be protected, that should be outside of our urban growth area, that should be in the county. And that would require a a boundary adjustment, which is something I know we're, one of the things that we may, we may talk about. It's definitely something we wanna work with. It just, it's not, it's a sensitive area, housing should not go there. It's agriculture already, and so why is that in the urban growth area, which is designated for growth? It shouldn't be. And so, we we should look at moving that boundary and and it makes sense to move it north into our northwest part of of Lacey where we currently have housing and some development going on. But it's, that area is where it makes sense to for for more density to go, not not in this geographical sensitive area.
Yeah, so that gets into our Pleasant Glade and McAllister geologically sensitive areas. I think those are locations that we're actually looking at as part of the next one. So, the really quickly, the agricultural zones, the the proposal would be to potentially change those to an urban holdings area, which is still a designation that exists within the urban growth area, but it does provide more protections. That said, the Pleasant Glade planning area and McAllister geologically sensitive areas currently have a urban holdings designation to them. And there is a recommendation as part of this plan to look at transitioning those to an urban reserve, which is actually a rural county designation that is outside of our urban growth area. And one of the reasons there is that looking at where our sewer is currently and the timeline that it would take to actually provide sewer services to those locations is some of the studies are looking at maybe even up to a hundred years for that. And really, the intent of the urban growth area is to look at that next twenty year planning horizon and look at what we feasibly can provide within that timeline. And currently, based on kind of the one at a time approach of when development happens, the sewer is brought along with it. It doesn't look like that's gonna happen in the near future. So, one of the initial reasons that these zones were brought into the urban growth area was because there was the opportunity to protect them and prevent additional sewer, or sorry, septic going in these places because they're located directly above a lot of our drinking water sources. So, the idea was more so to protect those drinking water sources than actually looking at them from an urban growth capacity perspective. And what we're finding is that there are plenty of opportunities and ways to protect those zones in the county. And we're also not on a timeline where we can get sewer to them in a reasonable amount of time where we're actually gonna be succeeding at protecting them the way that we want to. So, one of the other, so yeah, that's number six there. So, the recommendation, and this is a recommendation is to look at this, it's not a recommendation to go ahead and do this cuz right now, we don't have enough information to really figure out what that would look like. There will be a pretty significant amount of targeted outreach around this topic before we would actually propose that. So, reaching out to the individuals that live in those communities and really kind of having those conversations and figuring out what that looks like. So, the recommendation within the joint plan as far as today goes is to look at that and kind of figure out what that would entail and what that process would be. It's not to go ahead and do it today as part of the update to this plan, just as a distinction there. Yeah, so, in short, really, it's a consider removal from the UGA with a designation of urban reserve until such time that sewer can actually be provided in those areas is what we're looking at. Any questions on that one? I know that was a lot.
And sewer is never gonna be provided in those areas, that's why it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's distance one, it's also there's a whole host of environmental different challenges and obstacles to get through. So, as far as sending sewer out to those locations, it's it's not within, short story is that it's not within the next twenty years. And it's probably much longer than that realistically.
I I do, we're open for questions now.
Sure, yeah.
So, how does this tie in with that couple hundred acres to the north of the freeway that the tribe has now?
It doesn't.
The Hoxbury area?
That's the Hoxbury Business District and that's not, that's right in the center of our urban growth area in the city limits. And so, that wouldn't be affected with the urban holding area.
So, that's gonna be within the city limits?
That is in the city.
It is our city.
Okay, and really quickly, Grant, if you jump forward one slide, I did, I forgot about this, but I think that there is a map. Yep, okay, so, sorry. For those of you that aren't quite sure where these two locations are that we're talking about. So, they're the ones that are, have the orange circles around them. The one to the north is Pleasant Glade and that's located, yeah, there on the map is kind of a blow up of that. And then the McAllister geologically sensitive areas are locations that are southeast of the railroad tracks essentially. So, in that in that southeast corner, and then it's that whole kinda shape there that bumps out. It's that a kinda tanish gray next to the yellow, if that makes sense. So, yeah, okay, we can jump back now. Thank you, Grant. So, that's the urban holdings. And again, that is recommendation is to look at that, it's not a recommendation to move forward with it at this time. I will say that in discussions with our planning commissions, that that was something that both of our planning commissions were pretty interested in looking at in the study of what that would actually entail, so.
You had the joint planning commission meeting last night, correct?
Yeah, I was sitting right there last night. So, this is round two of this, it is a consolidated version. We will have time, we are gonna come back to you guys and do kind of a more involved presentation, but this is just kinda hitting some of those high level elements that are in there. So, yeah, and then the next one is the incorporation of the pedestrian bicycle plan. This was actually completed in twenty eighteen and it was a community wide study. So, it definitely included both city and urban growth areas as part of the study. And the emphasis here is just working on connectivity and safety and kind of improving networks. There's a lot of great recommendations that came out of this and we wanted to make sure that those were captured within this update, so, including that in there. And then the last one is incorporation. So, the, yeah, so the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee recently recommended to include the Greg Cuyo Park within the city of Lacey boundaries. So, part of this is to be consistent with that recommendation. So, we're including the park as part of the update so that at the end of the year, ideally, when all of these things are completed and adopted, that the plan will then be consistent with that inclusion. Right now, we're running into a, the, there's a lot of kind of multi jurisdictional permitting, emergency response and facility management challenges depending on geographically where you are in the park. So, working on just really bringing that into the city.
Right now, that's been, there's a part of Greg Cuyo Park that's outside of our urban growth area. And so, with with this recommendation, that will come, that will actually come into our urban growth area and we'll, and we would annex it and in that way, everything's within the city of Lacey for planning purposes, for for police purposes, or, you know, you name it. At least it's, it's all under one jurisdiction cuz right now, it's been, it hasn't been that way.
Another piece of that, too, is it not being split between a rural zone designation and urban designation, that it's all within the urban growth area.
And Grant, really quickly, if you jump forward, I think two slides, we have a map of that one. Possibly.
And this is a really exciting piece of property, and this Greg Cuyo Park. And we just went through, you know, several years of master plan it and outreach and it's it's a really exciting.
One more, there we go.
It's a really exciting piece of piece of property. Obviously, it's one of the largest acreages of park property, is largest acreage of park property, I think, in Thurston County. And the fact that we're in this, you know, multi year of 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 developing passive uses within this park, it's it's gonna be something that yours can be blown away when you go out and walk the trails and and see this. It's it's absolutely gorgeous, there's three different cricks that run through there and it's it's just really one of the most beautiful places in Thurston County. And and we're gonna be have access to for our residents to go out there and enjoy it. It's really an exciting, exciting time and it's a high priority for Lacey City Council.
And we're getting ready to construct the first phase of the Cuyo Park property off of, you know, upper road franchise this in twenty twenty four.
And a disc golf courses, master disc golf courses being designed and.
It's gonna be a huge local tourism draw.
Yep.
Yeah, and I will point out really quick, so the image on the right that has the blue outline around a portion of the park. So, the the part that's outlined in blue is actually what is in the rural Thurston County. So, it's not even currently within the urban growth area. So, in order to add it to the city, we first need to add it to the urban growth area and then at that point, we can add it to the city. And the recommendation there is really just to be consistent with that process so that when that goes through, that this plan is still current and represents that. Yeah, I think that's.
Can I go back to the twenty eighteen pedestrian and bicycle study?
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I'm I'm just thinking about the timeline of implementation and just, that was like six years ago where that plan came out and like how has it been updated as things are moving through?
We actually have a new, actually have a new pedestrian bicycle plan that we are just gonna be rolling out to the Transportation Policy Board next Wednesday?
That's the real, that's the real trails plan.
But it's, it sort of incorporates a little bit of this bicycle plan.
Yeah, cuz it, this twenty eighteen pedestrian bicycle plan is a separate plan that we developed both for the city of Lacey as well as the unincorporated UGA, went through a pretty robust participation process to establish it. And we're getting ready as part of the twenty twenty five conference plan update to start working on the transportation element of the plan. And then that plan, this bicycle plan will be incorporated into that review and updated with the transportation plan, so it's all.
And the trail, yeah, the trails plan's part of it, too.
Yeah, and that will be consistent with the regional transportation and trails plan.
Yeah, it's just making sure everything's consistent. It's kind of a, it's already been produced, it's out there, it had a pretty strong participation rate and a lot of successes and great recommendations that came out of it. But now, it's just making sure that these overlapping documents are consistent with each other.
The slide that's up there right now, there's two properties, it looks like, that are kind of surrounded, must be in rural America? Or are they in the urban growth area?
Yeah, so there's actually seven residential lots that were included as part of the Urban Growth Management Subcommittee's recommendation to include. All of them are residential. Three of them are actually, the the southern three are currently half in the urban growth area, half out. So, there's the lot, the line actually just goes right down the middle of them. And then there's the island that's farther to the northeast there, all of which are residential. And the finding there is that they would remain residential and really by adding them to the urban growth area and then even potentially the city, it's not gonna impact their development potential. They're already built out, the sewer is so far away that they're not gonna have density opportunities. So, from incorporation perspective, it's not gonna change their use or really what's possible on that land.
Are they going to be included in there, though? I mean, are you gonna surround those areas and they're gonna be in the city soon?
Yeah, and they would.
How does that work? Do those folks want to do that or are you kinda leaning on them? What are you doing to make it work?
So.
We, city of Lacey has been in contact.
Well, I mean, you gotta ask the question.
Yeah, with the island in the middle. You know, that is, that is the the role of the Urban Growth Management Board is to make recommendations, make sure there's consistency. And it sounds like I hadn't heard the recommendations yet, it made sense that they would include that for consistency purposes.
Yeah, one of the, one of the primary things is not to create little islands where in some examples Thurston County would have to travel through Lacey in order to provide services to those locations. So, from a response and kind of emergency planning perspective, it makes a lot more sense to have a consistent designation throughout.
And I would just add that this is just changing the UGA boundary. We we will still have to go through the annexation process, which includes a public outreach and and public comment at portion of it, so there is, there is a process to come.
And this is, the recommendations within the joint plan is mostly just to be consistent with the outcome of that process.
Can I ask a question about the potential, the sensitive areas and the potential of those coming out of the UGA and the need to sort of potentially find digital space? Is, does the land capacity analysis demonstrate any need to expand the UGA in other places to accommodate the population?
So, that was definitely, as part of the recommendation is to do that study and and actually look at that in depth. And part of that study would include looking at current land capacity, looking at population projections and figuring out if we still have the space to accommodate those population projections. And if not, then we would look at other locations that would be able to accommodate that. But based on the Billable Lands Report from twenty twenty one, it seemed that we had significant capacity to accommodate growth likely beyond what we would be potentially losing by removing those locations. That said, the recommendation is to study that more in depth. So, we at a high level, we kinda have an idea, but the recommendation is really to delve into that a lot deeper and kind of figure out what those numbers exactly are and make that important. And make that informed decision at that time, so, yeah. So I think that as far as high level, kind of what's changing is everything that I have on my list. And then the last slide is really just a timeline of where we're at today and we're, really what we're headed towards. So the, the top half of this breakdown really represents kind of the, the planning commission side of things, so the planning commission review. We've gone to the planning commission a couple times at this point. We actually had our joint work session last night in this room, so this is my second time here. And then out of that, there is a recommendation for a September 27th public hearing of the joint plan for the joint, joint planning commissions.
Oh, it's a joint public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, so that's currently where we're at today. And then looking into the end of August and into September, legal review has already started to some degree on the plan, so that's already kind of an ongoing timeline. All of these do have some, but not cleaned, broken up by month to month. They'll have some overlapping timeline attached to them, but generally speaking, that's kind of where we're at. And then there's a recommendation from Lacey City Council. They'll have an opportunity to review it following planning commission feedback and findings. And then really after that, we move into, kind of after September, moving in through the end of December, working towards the December 12th date is, I think, what we're looking for for potentially a final adoption. Between now and then, that we're looking at work sessions with both City Council and the Planning Commission. Review, public hearings, and then final draft resolutions, ordinances, and then a final legal review as well. So that's, it is a pretty tight timeline. We still feel pretty confident about making it happen. But that's the breakdown. And then I did want to point out that the ongoing community engagement that really runs throughout, that's not a process that really stops or starts. We definitely have a targeted community engagement component that's happening around this plan today. And as it's kind of going through the update process, but also I will say that everything that's within this plan is really something that's also been focused on and researched, and we've done a lot of outreach on those specific elements as well. The Martin Way Corridor being a pretty prime example of that, and so a lot of the things that are being included within this update have also experienced pretty significant public engagement and participation and feedback, so.
Yeah. Can you elaborate on what the public sentiment has been through this process?
Yeah, so, so far, we've really been in a awareness and kind of education role. As, as far as planning documents go, it's not the most exciting thing in the world for a lot of people. So really, we're tracking success by having conversations with people, seeing how many people are actually visiting and reading the site. We have had some comment. A lot of those comments are specific to individuals' properties, more so than plan-wide feedback. So those are things that we are looking at and addressing and having conversations with, but there hasn't been a whole lot of kind of update or UGA-wide feedback that we've received to date. That said, we have had, might actually have some of the numbers. Yeah, so as far as just kind of a high-level rundown of kind of the outreach engagement that we've done for this update so far, we've launched two different webpages, one on City of Lacey's website and one on Thurston County's. We have the story map, which I referenced at the beginning of this. I think to date, we've had around 750 folks that have worked their way through that and learned about the plan, and some of which have then also provided feedback. And then we've also did, at the very beginning of this, there was a community-wide survey that was launched. And within that, the Lacey community, there were around 320, 26 participants that provided feedback as far as kind of the high level what they want to see moving forward in the future, and that included Lacey residents as well as UGA residents in that 326 number. And then as far as other outreach, we've kind of used all of our social media and in print and other outreach formats that we have available. And through all of those kind of raising awareness, we've reached over 4,000 people. So just kind of letting them know it's out there, trying to get feedback, encouraging them to learn about it and then provide feedback. And then we've also attended three different community events. Juneteenth, July 3rd fireworks, and Thurston County Fair. And those three were specifically selected because of their ability and kind of the, the, not the people that attend those events, it's really a good pull of Lacey and Lacey Urban Growth Area residents, so they were specifically selected for their ability to really draw from that, those crowds. Yeah, and yeah, I think that's, that's kind of the engagement that we've done for this outreach, or this update specifically so far today.
Long-range plan sequence of dates up for the next 20 years, for an example. You're planning on going this far, this far in this year, you know, over, do you have a 20-year plan? Is that kind of what I heard?
I think what, I, I'm curious, and that's a follow-up on, on Commissioner's question, is first of all, this has been long overdue, right? I mean, it's been 20 years since we've updated this. 20 years, that's like, that's hard to add. How do we go 20 years before we start coordinating to up, make sure our plan was consistent? And so I guess my, the next good question is, is are we gonna, is there something going forward that we're gonna put in place where we're gonna make sure it's not another 20 years before we meet? I mean, are we gonna put in some benchmarks where we're gonna be at least regularly, you know, meeting on a whatever year basis, so we can make sure that we can continue to work together and make sure we're successful going forward? And if something changes, that we're, we're not two decades in the future before we address it?
Yes. So there are quite a few recommendations within this strike plan that include collaboration, working together to accomplish those recommendations, so there's a lot of studies that are out there. A lot of studies that lead to potential actions, and each one of those has recommendations attached to it as far as working together to pursue those and figure out, get findings from those so that we can then take those next steps. So that's specific elements within the plan, and then at a higher level, just from an update perspective, the last time, when this was initially last, sorry, when this was last adopted in 2003, we were actually supposed to be on an eight-year rolling timeline as far as how frequently the joint plan is updated. Between 2003 and now, that timeline's actually been bumped out to 10-year timelines, but still, we are a good 10-plus years beyond that, so we are well overdue to get this thing through. That's, yeah.
If I can jump in to Hans. We're, we're kind of, Josh's team is, is working on kind of catching up so that we can actually immediately roll into the, the big comp plan update due in 2025. So, so this is kind of cleaning things up so we can get the development regulations in place, so we're more consistent within our, for the permitting jurisdictions, we'll talk about that later. And then, you know, next year, we'll be starting the, the big update process. And that will include another joint plan update, so is that fair, Josh?
Oh, good. I, I guess just to follow up on what the mayor just commented on. Have we made any advancement towards the UGA surrounding Lacey maybe being permitted with that, having them do, do the actual permitting process?
I think we're gonna talk about that here on number four today.
It's coming up.
And just kind of the foreshow, that is, the, the agenda items are kind of talking about all these different steps that we're working on to get synced up, so then we can start looking at the annexation or permitting issues that have come up recently.
Josh, I want to give you a chance to respond, and then after that, I kind of want to, because if not, we'll be here until
Midnight.
Midnight, yeah.
Just take 45 minutes. There you go. I'm Joshua Cummings. I'm the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. And just piggybacking on Mayor Ryder's comment, it has been 20 years. And I'd say that a lot of the recognition should go to the Board of County Commissioners who docketed this item and prioritized all of our joint plans that were long overdue. They directed our team to reach out to each one of the cities. And to the credit of the different cities, Tumwater, Olympia, Lacey, and Yom, you guys have been responsive and appreciated the communication. We've been happy to be flexible when the Greg Cuyo thing came up, the park, to try and roll that in, as Grant says, and next steps. And we recognize that over this long period of time, that the visions have diverged in this area that have led to confusion in the permitting process, and we'll get in that conversation. But recognize that this is a success, that the Board of County Commissioners directed our team to work directly in creating something that hadn't been done in 20 years. And that we're at this point with all of the major jurisdictions to be having these conversations, that then lead us to the development code updates. This, I think, is a big win for all of us in our community, and we should, you know, think about what we can do better next time. But also take a minute to recognize that you've done great this time. That's what I would say.
We really appreciate it. We know how important this is. I, I think this relationship between Lacey and Thurston County is really one of the most important relationships with all, within all of Thurston County, because as TRPC will tell us, that the majority of the growth that we're expecting in this county is going into our urban growth area. And so we have to get on the same page to make sure we're, we're meeting our growth management goals. And first steps is making sure our joint planning is working, so we, we can, we can do that, so.
Your staff member, Leah Davis, is the driving force on this internally, so when you see her, think joint plans. Really appreciate it.
I do, this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, rolling around the.
She put a plug this morning.
Yeah, she did. Okay, great, so thank you. We'll move on to the Martin Way Corridor.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Hans.
And Grant.
That was a great meetup.
Answer your question, Commissioner. We're not gonna lean on him. We're not gonna lean on him. We're gonna coax a man real gently.
Okay, sounds good.
Are you coming up, please?
Looks like it closed. Thank you.
Are we gonna call it?
Yeah, we're working on.
Skip this, huh?
There's always some kind of technology problems. Well, we'll link that up, because we'll just go ahead and kind of set, set the stage. Good evening, City Council members, Board of County Commissioners, Allison Osterberg, Planning Manager with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And I think, I think we've already presented on this project a number of times to most of the folks in this room, and so I really want to give a, a thanks to, to Hans for the setup. I think there's a lot of the issues talked about in the joint plan update work that tie in really nicely with what we'll talk about with Martin Way. This has been a really great example of the amazing work that can happen with collaboration among our jurisdictions. And I just want to also call out Matt Unselman from Thurston County, who was one of the partners on this project on the transportation side. I think it's, it's a, it's a really good example of the kind of coordination that helps to address some of the challenges that we see in these, in these areas that were developed before. We had a lot of the rules that we have in place today.
You wanna navigate it, I'm gonna help you.
Should I come up there, or?
We can hand it out.
Wonderful. Thank you. Hey, all right, so the purpose of the Martin Way Corridor study was really to develop a common vision for Martin Way, recognizing that it runs through a number of our jurisdictions. And this was a partnership between not just Thurston County and the City of Lacey and TOPC, but also included the City of Olympia and, really critically, Intercity Transit, who has a tremendous amount of importance on this corridor. And I just want to highlight that the Martin Way Corridor study is an example of, the latest example of sort of a history of corridor thinking and work that has happened in our region dating back to the early days of planning in this region and really was enshrined in the Urban Corridors Task Force that developed their recommendations in 2012. We're looking at that old state highway system that now is part of our communities, and what does, what does that mean, and what kind of, how can we work together to plan around those? So if you're thinking about development that's happened in, for example, what was the, the Woodland District, that's now Lacey Midtown? Or along Capitol Boulevard? That, the kind of improvements that you're seeing there now have their roots in this corridor planning work that happened at a regional level. So these plant corridor plans, they're often the seeds of things that take a long time to sprout. But those conversations about how to work together on these areas really help set the stage for this long-term planning that happens through comp plans and through joint plans.
Yes, I guess I was the only elected official that, that was here when the Urban Corridor Task Force Study recommendations came out. And we did see quite a bit of success in this region based off the task force, where the City of Lacey was focused on what's now called our Woodland District. And of course, we're, we're seeing a lot of success in that area right now. Of course, Olympia focused on downtown and, and getting more housing downtown, and we've seen, we've seen that happen. And then in Tumwater, they've looked at the Capitol Boulevard, the brewery district, and look what they've come out of that, so. It does show, I, I vote, you know, I, I would hate when we work on a plan and it just sort of sits on a shelf, but there are some really good things that came out of this task force recommendations, and we've seen that happen in, in our area.
Could I just comment on something the mayor said there? On letting, you know, you work it out and then it sits on the shelf for years. And that's kind of a blight to the community when that actually happens. Do they ever end up issuing a temporary permit to a property owner? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna use as an example just something that, because I've been contacted. The owner of the property, for an example, wants to put a used car lot on a piece of property. And right now, it's just a, a ice store, it's a vacant, nothing, for an example. But that particular business doesn't fit within the plan for, in the future. Is there any process where that citizen could have that business there in a temporary fashion? Like, that's why I asked about the 20-year plan when they're building out. So that the owner of that property, you know, they, they just don't get to do anything they want with the property forever. It has to fall within the plan. Where they'd be able to have a five or a 10-year permit. Is that ever done to keep, keep an area from being a blight while they're waiting until the real plan is coming together? And I'll, I'll just use that, the district that, where the new distillery and stuff is. You know, that was a mess for years. And I don't know if that could have been used for something else during that period, but I know I, I've actually seen places that are, they're left as a blight for a long period of time until something else catches up. And so a temporary permit, they'd have to sign off on it.
That's a Rick question.
So there, there are a couple, a couple of things in there and a couple of issues. So when you start setting your, your plans and your vision for a subarea or community-wide or a corridor like the Urban Task Force, you're kind of setting that vision, you're looking at what do you want to see the, the district become, you're looking at future population growth as well as other dynamics in market. Sometimes a market takes a lot to catch up. But also, too, when you do, when you start looking at your subarea plans, you also got to move into implementation, that gives you your development codes to be able to realize that vision. Now, a lot of times, you have a lot of properties that will be, you know, be transition properties where they have a current use that in the new vision would not be allowed, and it can be grandfathered in, but then when the new proposal comes forward, then you start making that incremental change into lining with the vision. And sometimes you have vacant properties, you have people proposing things that don't quite fit that vision or the development codes, and so you get in that situation that you just described. There, there's not a way to really do a temporary use provision for that, for a transition period, because once somebody gets something established, they're going to want to have that as their livelihood. And it's got to match up with that community vision that's, that's set by that planning effort. And then also guided by those development codes, and that creates the playbook or the rules for how you develop or use those properties. And it's balancing that individual needs to the community and the surrounding property.
We've, we've set up conditional use.
There are conditional use permits, but typically, very rare that you would say they have this used for 10 years. There's temporary uses, but those are generally in the six-month frame or less, and they're usually not a established, you know, permanent construction type of things. It'll be like a, a temporary use to be, for example, a, a sales building for adjoining parcel that's under development for housing, and they want to create a sales office and be tied to that, that, that first use, so there's a beginning and an end, and not just a general overall 10-year period. Because then you get into the issues of, okay, when you start to revoke that, and they're not ready, then you get into a lot of legal challenge on land use law that gets, uh, makes it complicates it very fast.
The Martin Way Corridor, just to orient folks, it, it runs from that triangle where Fourth Avenue and State and Pacific kind of branch off, all the way out to Meridian. Avenue and State Pacific kind of branch off all the way out to Meridian Dutero Road. And it runs through the city of Olympia, the city of Lacey, the Lacey Urban Growth Area, back into the city of Lacey, back into the Urban Growth Area. And one of the goals of this project was to, for people who are, who are traveling along that corridor, it's one of our major east-west connections for the region. They don't see those boundaries. And there's a sense of wanting to have greater, more of a seamless process for folks who are using this corridor in different ways. I won't go into it. There were a lot of pieces to this study, a lot of public outreach, a lot of analysis that came into it, and all that led to some of the good options that I'll talk about. Just to orient you, Martin Way was built as part of the state highway system. And that really meant, there wasn't a lot there at the time. It was developed to be straight and for people to move quickly from Olympia out over Niskualee and toward Tacoma. And that was what it was designed for, and that was its intent. Fast forward more than 80 years and around Martin Way today, which includes a quarter-mile on either side of that, we have around, probably more than this now, 9,000 residents, a major drip section for jobs and employment in our region. It's a, there's a number of transit lines, a major hospital that's along Martin Way. And it's, just has a huge importance to our community, to connecting our communities. And when we look ahead in the future, we're seeing that there will be increased housing along this corridor, more people living there, more people working there, more multifamily development, we're already seeing that than we've seen in the past in this corridor. And the issue with that is that, you know, we're continuing to focus more and more uses on a roadway that was not, that was designed for a very different purpose. And we're likely to see increasing conflict between those different uses unless we plan for that carefully. And so how are we going to accommodate those needs in the future? And that's really the heart of this, thinking about this study. So through this process, we really reaffirm the vision that already existed for the Martin Way corridor in the Lacey Joint Plan, which is one of the areas this was articulated. And that's that that corridor be an attractive mixed-use, high-density area that, one of the key points is sort of transitioning away from those really auto-dominated uses to something that's more, that supports different uses a little bit more. People will continue to use it as an east-west transportation connection, but also thinking about how we're accommodating walking and biking and increase, that increased transit use along the corridor in a way that also makes it, Martin Way not just a place that people are using to move through the county, but a place to be and that it has a place to, at a sense of place. So the goals are to improve safety for all users along the corridor, no matter what their mode is, supporting growth in a way that's inclusive, balancing the needs of those different users, increasing connectivity throughout the corridor and continuity, and building that sense of place. So we just kind of take you toward Martin Way's future, what that preferred alternative is. So today, because Martin Way is based on that highway model, it's really the straight line, just getting from one place to another. That's how it's designed, and that's how people behave on it, because that's what they're cued to do. In the future, the idea is to move to more of a network approach. That means Martin Way helps people, right now it can function almost as a barrier to people wanting to get across it, both physically, if you're a pedestrian trying to cross it, but also, you know, there just aren't a lot of ways that kind of divides our community. So thinking about how to plan for a future where Martin Way is part of a broader network, and everything isn't necessarily being funneled on to Martin Way as the only option for everything. And to get to that future will require a combination of strategies around transportation and land use and just general leadership and investments that are really interconnected. So some of the things, the recommendations coming out of this study is on the land use side, the vision is to move toward distinct hubs of activity or nodes potentially around key intersections where we've got really concentrated, particularly affordable housing that puts people in places where they have easy access to transportation options. And the next steps that would come up to doing that would be identifying, you know, what those locations are, really what their boundaries are, and what the design requirements, zoning standards, development standards would be as part of that nodal development. Also, a key thing that's come up in that is really thinking, we have some affordable housing along Martin Way now, and how do we make sure that the corridor doesn't develop in a way that displaces communities that depend on that area? So that's kind of a key part of the vision for land use on Martin Way. On the transportation side, there are some, some safety concerns along Martin Way. And so in the short term, we really want to look at ways to make some high-impact changes at key locations where we have safety issues, enhance access to transit as that continues to expand on the corridor, and really create a comfortable network for people traveling by bike and pedestrian. There are, for example, bike lanes along Martin Way, they're pretty intimidating to use. And so there are options out there, potentially not very costly ones, some that are already underway, to help enhance that network. So part of how we get there, some of these are things that were identified in Lacey's bike and pedestrian plan. So there are things like completing the gap where we have sidewalks, sometimes they just stop and start and stop and start, filling those gaps, creating better buffered bike lanes. Right now, there are just tons of driveways and access points on Martin Way, and that's a safety issue for drivers and pedestrians and bicyclists. So thinking about access on the corridor, how people get in and out of it, so it's just a little more controlled. Thinking about what the future for combining transit on the corridor means and how we balance that with other uses. And looking at our intersections and just making sure they're working well for balancing all these different users. On the leadership side, the vision is just that Martin Way, I think, has suffered a little bit by sort of being in everyone's backyard. And the way to achieve this vision, I think, is keeping this corridor through discussions like this, front and center, that this is a key and important corridor for the community. It will need both public and private champions who believe in this vision and want to invest in this corridor. And part of the way we can do that is continuing to have conversations like this, keeping this corridor front of mind when doing these planning efforts, looking at ways to do some creative financial options to see, get the kind of development and investment on the corridor that supports the vision. And some of that involves probably some creative public-private partnerships, recruiting different kinds of tenants or institutions to be located on the corridor, is the heart of those hubs, or just kind of thinking about how can we do things in a different way to make the vision we have for the corridor accomplishable?
What kind of financial tools are available? You said creative financial tools. Can you give him the example of a creative financial tool?
Sure. So there have been some recent changes to state law around, around taxi permit financing. And so something that might be something to look at for this corridor is how can we designate a district, this corridor as a district in a way that collects funding for it and can be reinvested in the, in the community to achieve whatever aims are kind of designed through that way? Another barrier that comes up when we talk about development on Martin Way is because it's, it's an older highway area, a lot of the development that's in there, it's really from the 30s and 40s, predates stormwater regulations that we have today, predates the frontage requirements we have today. And so that's a barrier when we're trying to see new development come in, they have to bring everything up to standards. So is there a way to?
Defray some of those costs?
Yeah, to defray some of those costs, because developers are going to have to, or fund some of those costs at the municipal level, whether that's some of those frontage improvements. So something like for Olympia, their way of collecting impact fees now is they can use them in a different way to invest for priority improvements around sidewalks or bike lanes or crossing structures in a way that they maybe couldn't have done before. So options like that, how do we get these infrastructure improvements that will support the land use and that will support some of these other things that we want to have? Go ahead.
Allison, I'm sure that the answer to this question is yes, but when you were doing this study, did you look at the different types of zoning, like the definitions of the different zoning categories that are in, that have been applied to Martin Way?
Yeah.
Opportunities to sort of standardize? Because we have existing development all up and down Martin Way, right? So there's probably not that many places where there isn't already a lot of development, except maybe that one spot between Winko and college. But can we in the future try to equalize some of that? So we have more consistent development or targeted development for the things that we want to build those nodes or clusters?
Yes. So we did look at the zoning quite a bit through this study. Preferred vision, land use vision that we have for Martin Way is, is that maybe not all, because sort of the zoning that's on Martin Way now is the sort of strip zoning. There, in both Olympia and the Lacey and Lacey UGA, there are these high-density commercial mixed-use zoning districts. And there's been sort of mixed success with what's come out of those. And the recommendations we really saw from the analysis we had is if you want to see success, you have to concentrate in some areas. And that's where this nodal development concept came from. So that might mean slightly different, but complementary for the different parts of the corridor, definitions about what the zoning standards are in these nodes and how that might be different from areas in between nodes, so that you have a little variation along the corridor. But if you think about kind of a neighborhood sort of concept, you know, it goes up and down, but instead of right now, everything's sort of the same along the corridor. And that means the development we have on the corridor, it's, it's spread out. And so how do we really take the resources we have and invest them in a way that we can see the highest impact that might take focusing a little bit more than the zoning that we have now?
Like high-density residential intentionally in one area and then having commercial in another area nearby, so that people who live there can walk to the businesses close by and they have to drive less?
Yeah, or we talked a bit about options like, because most of Martin Way is developed right now, but at a lower intensity than we may want to see, how do we creatively adapt the development that's already there? That might mean there's not so much mixed use as we think of it, like horizontal, vertical mixed use, but a horizontal mixed use, where maybe we have commercial up close to Martin Way. And then, you know, where we have a giant parking lot now, there's, there's a capacity to have some of that be housing. And then the commercial and the residential is in proximity to each other and in proximity to transportation options, those kinds of things.
I can just head on to what Allison's talking about too, and it goes back to the land use, but also important to keep in mind the transportation, those furniture improvements, because you can have that horizontal mixed use, which is great, but it's not comfortable or not safe or not to walk that corridor or get across it, then you still not, you still have an isolated uses. And so it's really important, what's nice about this Martin Way corridor plan is it's looking at all these different functions from the vehicle to the bike, to the pedestrian, to the transit, to be able to connect these identified nodes that can create those mixed use. Example, if you go out way, way, or far east, East Martin Way, out past, out by River Bridge High School, east of Costco, there has been some success in the current zoning, the mixed-use high-density corridor. However, you know, you've got some density, we've got some services, we've got some retail, we've got some restaurants, it's really come be nice little neighborhood, but you still have that challenge of how you navigate the corridor. To one of our projects that's under construction now, used to be called Martin Way East, but it's a different name now, it's a mixed-use ground floor retail, but with further residents, they're going to have a bike share program where they can use to get down to the services since it is still a straightway. But there's, there's ways you can look at that in combination of making those transportation and to the land use.
I do think we need to have some, some common sense on, on some of the zoning down this area too, because a lot of times when we do zoning, we just put the zoning 100 feet on either side all the way down, and we don't take into consideration what are the property lines, right? And so you may have a parcel where part of the parcel is in one zoning and the majority of the parcel is in a different zoning, but you end up hamstringing that property owner to be able to do something, you may be something creative or, you know, that will benefit the overall corridor, but can't because their, their property's in two different zones. Split zoning. So we, you know, we really need to take a look at some of that split zoning and see if we can consolidate that and get some development happening on the corridor. There's other reasons why development's not happening on this corridor, but, you know, the split zoning is not, is one of the reasons.
I'm, the Martin Way corridor, yeah, I've seen this presentation many times and, you know, just that area is extremely diverse in more than one way, just in terms of different aspects. And so as for looking at this, right, and I saw the anti, I just thought you spent policies, but how do we kind of make sure not to gentrify that whole area, right? As we're seeing in many other communities, you know, not only Washington State, but across the US, as we're updating these homes from the 30s and that they need to be updated, it's becoming, the whole character is changing. And so I'm wondering in that aspect, right, how, how can we walk that fine line to keep that character that is currently, I feel like, very, it's very strong in the Martin Way corridor throughout that whole area?
Especially because there are some mobile home parks, in particular, on this corridor. And that's something we, we, I think we need to be on the same page on is what we're doing with our mobile home parks throughout Thurston County, because it's, it's really some of the last really affordable housing that's out there. But it's, it's a weird relationship, of course, where they, and so where the protections in place for that, that could help along that. You know, it's not just a one-size-fits-all. I think we care more about how it's interacting with the corridor, not necessarily what the type of use is, is more of a, you know, look at along those lines, is how's it interacting with the corridor? Is it interacting well with the corridor?
Well, I think too, part of this conversation with the Martin Way corridor update is looking at those residential uses and also trying to, boy, just what you're looking at is, or minimize or mitigate the displacement issue. And displacement's not only just existing businesses, but also the residential and especially low-income, and trying to provide ways, or be conscientious of that to figure out what tools do we need to help with either relocation or rehabilitation of those, of those type of units, so that we're not gentrifying the area, but we're trying to do it in concert. We also, as part of our 2025, 2025 Conferencey Plan Update, we will be looking at also the mobile manufactured home parks. And that's a key piece for providing some low-income housing or affordable housing. And how do we look at various, you know, parks or units? And based on their condition and where they are, how do you protect them and/or provide ways to offset displacement? And so you're balancing both the property owner, right, and plus the tenant, right, and trying to figure that out. So we're going to be working through that in 2025. I know City of Tumwater's already have worked on that issue over the last, kind of led on that issue in the last five, 10 years and have some provisions in place. And it's just something with a barosso talking, I think it's going to be an issue going forward as we update all of our housing offices.
Lots of good examples there. And the only thing I would add to that is that I think also there's an opportunity to do some of that placemaking and community building work. There are really strong communities along the Martin Way corridor. So something we, a recommendation or something to come out would be to develop some kind of district group or whether that's a business, business improvement district or something, something that kind of recognizes the person, that someone has ownership over this corridor and gives it a bit of personality. There are a number of different ways to do that. Function like, like neighborhood groups or, there's lots of different models out there. But I think also an important component to seeing success on this is having the residents and the people who live there think of themselves as they live in a place not along the highway, you know, and that's just a, it's a different, it's a little bit of a different way than how it's been treated. And we're already seeing that really happen along this corridor with some of the improvements that are going in. If you think about the area around the Lacey Farm Stand that's out there through the food district, or the Lehigh Building, I'm blanking on the name on, in the Olympia section where near the city of transit. Or Community Commons, where we've got, Unity Commons, where we've got some of, you have an opportunity there, because there are opportunities to build along Martin Way that we don't have in a lot of other areas, to create affordable housing options or to create opportunities for communities. So while there are a lot of constraints along Martin Way, I think there are also opportunities that we don't see in other parts of our community. And I think that's important to keep, keep in mind. But keeping those communities involved in, and having ownership over what happens in that corridor, I think is a key part of, of having that. I just got a couple more to go through. Just want to highlight, we did do a lot of public outreach for this and really heard a lot of support for this vision from the community, a strong support, we're seeing affordable housing and that nodal approach, strong support. Especially when we asked people what they wanted us to focus on is in improving safety and crossing opportunities came up a lot. And a lot of support that for jurisdictions, finding new ways to do things on this quarter, trying something new. A recognition that that might mean doing something different than that's happened in the past. So implementation, we're nearing the end of this project. The work that the county and City of Lacey are doing to incorporate recommendations into the joint plan is part of our overall recommendations coming out of this project. And, but really where implementation happens is taking the lessons from this work, incorporating them into the joint plan update, incorporating them into the next round of comprehensive plan updates. And then into subsequent updates to development regulations, policies and procedures. So it is, you know, this is kind of again, the framework that gets carried into work that you'll see down the line. And, you know, just to come back to Mayor Ryder's, just not wanting to see a plan just be on the shelf. A lot of this work is already underway in Martin Way. We're seeing a lot of new multifamily going up all the time on Martin Way, so that vision is, it's underway. There's a, a transit signal priority work to make sure transit services and the way buses can move along the corridor, that that's well coordinated. That's been a great project and we're seeing a pilot effort on Martin Way. Matt, just let me know, they're just out there today doing some bike lane striping to kind of help create better separation for the bike lane. That's a recommendation that came out of this study and is already going.
So City of Lacey's rubbing off on us, we're starting to do buffered bike lanes. So we recently repaved all of the county's portion of Martin Way. So if you get stuck in traffic at night, it was my fault. But yeah, we're putting buffered bike lanes. And then you also mentioned ADA improvements. So we're within two intersections of having all of our ADA improvements done on Martin Way corridor. So our ADA transition plan prioritized that corridor and we're finally getting to the end of it.
People thought you were changing it to twenty five permanent.
I, believe it or not, I got quite a few of those one calls.
So did we, yeah.
There's also a project coming up for that eastern part of Martin Way, the East Martin Way Gateway Roundabout. Work with intercity transit and the county to look at that eastern part of the corridor and kind of how to, how to build out transit turnaround in that area. So that'll be happening in the future. And something I'm really excited about, we got some funding, it'll be starting up later this year from the state. Came directly out of the work in the Martin Way corridor study project to look at that highest priority that came up is, is crossing opportunities on Martin Way. So we have about nine hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars coming from the state to develop a strategy and identify locations and improvements to help facilitate pedestrian crossing on the corridor. All of that is to say, it's a lot going on in Martin Way. It's been a great project and a great example, I think, of jurisdictional coordination. And builds on a lot of the work that's already happened and really sets you up for a lot of good stuff in the future.
I can just.
You guys doing signal crossing or just pedestrian?
It might be signals. Yeah.
So I get all kinds of grief for not putting sidewalk or crosswalks across Martin Way. But I'm not, the county's not going to put a crosswalk across Martin Way unless it's considered a protected. You're putting people across five lanes of traffic that isn't going thirty-five, forty miles an hour. So we need to have those enhancements like the, the refuge alley in the middle. We need to have the overhead lighting. It's just, it's, it's just not safe. And that's exactly what Allison's talking about. That's what the next phase of this study is going to identify is where are those appropriate locations?
I know, we're waiting.
These are big topics to have enough.
This is one of those that's been going on for a lot of years. And I just wanted to say really quickly, this particular Martin Way corridor study is an effort of, you know, the City of Olympia, intercity transit, Thurston County, Lacey and TRPC. And I want to thank TRPC for their role in coordinating and leading this effort. And this is building off of years of work going back to, oh, before twenty twenty.
Yeah, Vision Reality, Vision Reality Task Force.
And then you also have the Sustainable Thurston effort. Again, always for our regional efforts, we're all coming to the table and trying to figure out what is our community vision and how we make it mesh between the boundaries. And so we appreciate all the work that staff has done on this and bringing us forward.
Good job.
So it's seven thirty and so I kind of want to make sure that people don't have time limits since we are kind of going over time. Do you want to, maybe if there's like information sharing and then?
I, I think we should do the annexation permitting conversation. I know it's, it's really long, I almost kind of wish we would have started with this since, but, because this is, there's some new information in here that we sort of need to get up to date on. Let's, let's maybe share the information sharing or?
Is there anything that we need to touch base on for information sharing or anything? Nothing from us, Lacey? Okay, we can strike that off, let's move straight into permits and annexation.
I believe Grant Beck will be leading this conversation from his virtual voice.
And I was going to open, you took the wind out of my sails. I was going to open by saying, well, I see we're out of time. So thank you, Josh and I have coordinated on this too, but you'll be hearing mostly from, from me tonight. But we can, either of us can answer questions as at the end here when we get through it. So next slide, please. So annexation has been a priority of the city councils for quite a, quite a while. And they formalized that in, I believe it was twenty twenty-one, when we developed a work strategy, work plan priority for the city. And you can see that coordinated and collaborative planning is, is an overall strategy. And specifically, we identified creating a framework to strategically advance annexations and UGA permitting. Next slide. And the, that plan also has a kind of a task list and benchmarks associated with it. So you can see we anticipate this year being the, begin of, begin review of the annexation policies. And also determining the impacts to both the, the city and Thurston County revenues and expenses based on annexation to inform an actual strategy and plan moving forward on how to, how to do these things systematically.
Is he checking in and out? Something's going on in the voice.
I think your, your, your sound is coming in and out a little bit.
Better now? Is that better now?
Yeah, keep going and see.
Okay, next slide, please. This is the, kind of a video of all the annexations over time since Lacey's been incorporated to show the, the growth over time. Unfortunately, this also matches my own growth, not in a good way, over the same time period. Next slide. So the considerations that we need to really dive into in developing an annexation strategy is to really consider the financial impacts, as I indicated earlier, to, to both Lacey and the county as properties are annexed. The other consideration is what, what are the expected levels of service from the city and, and by the city of Lacey and what investments we'd have to bring, make to bring, to match the, the expectations of the citizens for the levels of service. And of course, the will of the people, whether they, they want to be part of the city or remain county residents within the urban, urban growth area. The, the starting place for, for that review is to update the, the work we did. I believe that was twenty eighteen, but my eyes are way too old to, to read that. Update the Tango Island Thompson Place feasibility analysis, but expand it to include the entire urban area. And that process will begin next year, as you'll see from the next slide. So the, the, the first step is both the county and the city working on an annexation feasibility study. And then consider adoption of an interlocal agreement that formalizes that strategy. Next, next slide. That was, that was the overview of annexations. It, I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions on that part?
I think, I just want to bring, annexation is something I've been talking about for a long time, saying we need to normalize our borders. We need to figure out a way to do this, of course. Always hear how expensive it is to, for annexation. And I, I understand that it's gotten more expensive the longer we've waited as well. I think the difference now is that the state did just pass some legislation that will help annexations between the cities and, and the county on some revenue sharing. And so I, I, I really think it's important that we come up with a, an annexation plan that we can work together on. So we're, we're, there's predictability coming up from both sides where we under, have a better understanding of what, what the true costs are. And you know, sometimes I, you know, reference this, the annexation study in two thousand and eighteen. And you know, the, the cost it showed to annex Tango Island Thompson Place was this astronomical number that, you know, of course, you take a look at it and you go, oh, that's never going to happen. But you know, I, I'm sort of really curious on, you know, if the county has a breakdown on, you know, what you're, you're spending in, in these areas. I mean, what are, what are your costs? And does that match, you know, what we're saying are going to be the costs? You know, what, what's, what's the cost, you know, how much are you guys spending in Tango Island Thompson Place? And is, is that going to be close to what we're saying we're going to have to spend if we're annexed it? And so it, it just would be nice if we're a little bit more on the same page instead of hiring these outside people to take a guess of, of what the, the costs are going to be. When we should have some actual costs, if we can just work together and have a better understanding and then work together on that annexation plan so we, so we can go forward with this and be on the same page with you guys.
Thank you, Mayor, that, that for reinforcing that. That is, was my point on the, on the path forward. Both jurisdictions are going to have to be part of this process from start to finish and have a, a joint strategy, if you will, coming out of it. So that, very true.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Mayor, the new legislation, I, I think clears the path to have a assessment as to how the annexation should move forward.
Yeah, I, I just want to follow up on what you're talking about there. Okay, so there's a delay in annexations, but I still think we ought to have you folks involved in the whole permitting process so it matches when this happens.
I guess that's the next step. Can you get, let us know where we're at on that?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the entire question.
Prompted permitting, we're very interested in hearing on, on where we're at on that.
Oh yeah, we can, we can move forward. Thank you, that nice segue. So the things that we have to consider as we work together to, to figure that, that part of the equation out is what regulations would apply? Would it be, would the county adopt city development regulations? So if city staff were doing it, would be one set of rules that we're familiar with? Or would we have to, you know, learn two sets of codes? And that just affects how, how efficient and effective we can be and if we were to, to be permitting in the UGA. The second question is what fees would apply? The, some of the kind of nitty stuff that planners or planners really love or who hears the appeal? What's the appeal process? Would it be through the city's hearing examiner to the board of commissioners? Would it just be through the commissioners process where city staff would be representing? It's, we need to figure, figure that out. What permits go where? And by that, I mean, are there things that the county would retain the straightforward? We just do a certain part of the permitting? And, and where do they go from a approval standpoint? To the city's hearing examiner or the city staff making an administrative decision? Or the city making a recommendation, staff making a recommendation to the county staff for administrative permit? And then the big one for my sole code compliance officer, Kevin Zwing, is who, who does compliance? And who would do the complaint management within, within that area? Is that part of that permitting function or would that be retained by the county? So there's no answers tonight, but it's going to be a heavy conversation starting with Josh and I and just kind of working through all these issues so we can come up with potentially a system that will actually do what we expect it to do, which is be very efficient, fast and fair. Next slide.
Are you in the process of, of going through these considerations right now? I mean, are you guys working on, on, on these?
Well, yeah, we, we started last night with the hearing on the joint plan to determine that first consideration, which, what rules apply. So the, oh good, that is the corrected one. What that, that was the friend, we've said this, that's the first step is to get our plans in sync, which, which the county updated the joint plan now does. The next step is to, for the county to consider those development regulations, which theoretically would match the ones that we've got in place now. Would be very similar because those are the development regulations we adopted under that plan. And then, and that, those are both county-led actions. And then we both would, to consider the, the interlocal agreement about, that answers all those questions or provides direction on all those questions that we've worked through. It's an iterative process, it's going to take us talking for the next couple of years. So I think, we'll tap one more slide. Yes, thank you.
Just one more thing too, that you guys consider in this conversation with staff and trying to figure out what these paid volumes are, what the existing level of service for turnaround and what that does to staffing impacts as well. Because it's, it's, we have a, a very efficient, you know, admitting team. But adding increased volume, they need to, you need to look at staff increasing, how's that work? And how's that feather into this conversation as well? So there's, there's those dynamics beyond just the regulations, beyond just where appeals go and, and the costs. So that's one thing I just want to put out there that has to be worked out in this conversation.
So my, my, my recommendation, of course, I would, I, I agree with Commissioner and I, I do think we, the, the city should be taking over the, the permitting within our urban growth area. As long as it matches up and we, we answer those questions, then it would make sense that we are permitting to Lacey standards if we're going to be doing the permitting. And so that would have to go through a, a interlocal agreement. In, in the meantime, we have the, this Martin Corridor study. And one of them, one of the recommendations of this study is to have uniform permitting within this corridor. So my recommendation is we start on the corridor, right? Let's, let's look at the corridor, let's define the corridor, where, where it's at. And let's have the permitting process start there. And that way, hopefully we can meet the, the intentions of the Martin Corridor. You know, this study, and then it, it sets the stage for maybe the rest of the urban growth area. I, I understand where our staff is coming from, when I've been pushing this all along, you're saying, well, you're talking about permitting the size of, of, and a population greater than the, the city of Tumwater. And I'm like, oh, okay, you're right, our urban growth area is larger than Tumwater. So I, I understand doing it all at once might be a lot. But if we could focus it on the corridor and come up with an agreement on the corridor, then we can sort of maybe build off that and continue to work on our annexation agreement too. I think those, there, there are two things that we need to work on. Let's focus in an interim, let's work on the permitting, interlocal agreement on the permitting process through our, this corridor. And then let's work on our annexation plan and then hopefully. And then hopefully, uh you know, once we have some agreement on an annexation plan, you know, once it's annexed, of course, it's in the city and we do the permitting going forward. But I just don't, I just don't want any more time to pass. We've been talking about this for a long time. We have a recommendation on the corridor side of it. Let's start there. We can work out the, the kinks. Um and then we can go from there on, on what's working, what's not working. Maybe we just start on, on, on new permits and we leave remodels to you guys for, I don't know, we, we can work this out as long as we continue to talk to each other and, and figure out what's the best for, you know, for the region. Does that sound like a plan? Should we at least start focus on the corridor?
It sounds like a plan to me, but you need, in our situation, you need two commissioners on your side to give direction.
Where, where do you guys stand on this?
To get her going.
Josh, how many years have I been talking about this with you? Since the year I got on the board, so. We definitely, I definitely wanna see, I, I like the idea of a, of a small, narrow pilot, work out the kinks. Knowing, you know, if the costs shift one way or the, the legal issues shift one way that we don't expect.
Sure.
The impact is small because we've focused. So I'd like to start that kind of small approach and then.
I have no problem with that.
Work it through.
You gotta get started someplace though, and so.
In Martin Way, it makes sense.
Martin Way makes sense.
I mean, some, some element of Martin Way, like you say, it might be a subset of the permits that.
So Robin, do you have?
Cause I, I think one of the questions that is in that slide that Grant demonstrated is interesting to me. I'm sure that there's been a lot of discussion about this, but the question of who hears the appeals on permitting decisions. Do we have a recommendation from staff on that? Do we have legal analysis of where that responsibility lies? Because we have to know that before we can do a pilot.
And that'd be part of, you know, before we can, we would have to go through a series of conversations, start building a framework to make sure that both elected bodies are comfortable with that. Because it's gonna be advocating some authorities to one direction or the other. Also, again, you gotta clear up, you know, what ordinances are going to be implemented. And if it's such, the chief is, is, you know, what the city has adopted, then the county would have to adopt those and be willing to do that and also go through the pub, the public process to do so. So there's a lot of layers there that will need to be worked out and set up a framework. And again, we've always talked about working on that and trying to uh um, you know, start having those conversations to look at the framework, what that true cost will be. And then also, they'll continue moving forward with what we've been working on is the Martin Way Corridor event, which is a key piece to help, you know, at the end of that process, take a look at it. And then also, again, with the joint plan updates in the coming twenty twenty-five. So we are working towards this conversation. I know it takes some slow, but we gotta get those policy documents done.
Yep.
While they're getting done, the staff will be working on where are those true issues, where are the, where are the concerns? And we have to bring them back to the respective elected bodies and make sure they're comfortable.
And, and as you stated, Mayor, so as Commissioner Mansur, this issue was discussed really at one of the, what, three years, four years ago, joint meeting? And uh, and I think the appeal process always seems to be a, a.
A sticky point.
Stinky point. Um and I think we need to get a little more and to dive into the legal aspects of, of, of the appeal process. How much the, the delegation of authority, Lacey City Council can give to the county or vice versa.
Sure.
So that's more, more legal, more legal analysis that needs to be done because, you know, we can work through an interlocal agreement determining uh development codes. And it, I, I think that's manageable, but I think it's getting into uh the law, in the prescription of the law related to appeals and who hears those.
Someone's gonna have to lay out for me what the legal considerations are, because from a policy standpoint, I'm not aware of Lacey being a better place to appeal or worse place to appeal. And the county, I don't have any policy concern about it, as long as the process is clear and fair.
And because of the jurisdictional issue, ultimately, the final decision will rest with the, the elected authority of that jurisdiction.
Is, is, is it an appeal?
Yeah.
You're gonna hear one next week. Is that quasi judicial?
But it's coming from a hearing examiner.
Either way, is that quasi judicial uh hearing that you have to do, whether it's the city has the same, it's quasi judicial.
Yep.
So how are we gonna be managed to quasi judicial, quasi judicial responsibilities from each body is really the question.
That's what I'm saying, I just need to hear from lawyers where is there.
Various options to be there under that quasi judicial process. You could have, if it goes to the hearing examiner, the hearing examiner, you have uh final appeal to elected body or it can be final appealable to Superior Court under Lutla. There's different options and there, you know, that's just depends too of the, what the elected, my council's starting to have these conversations.
And what we don't wanna see, I guess, and what, this is obvious to everybody, but what we don't wanna see is that we get to this point and someone files an appeal and we proceed with our planned approach to that appeal and then they challenge the legality of how we handled it.
Right.
Because it turns out we didn't have jurisdiction to do it that way.
And, and even to, to kind of.
Question.
I mean, what it sounds like is basically our lawyers have to talk to your lawyers to really like work this out. I mean, I, I'm in support for me, you know. I think uh really the residents are the ones who are struggling with, with this whole thing. And as long as there's continuity, um I think we can make it work. So you know, I think if it's a question about the legal, right, I, I think that's when maybe Commissioner Mansur, you know, requested like, it needs to be laid out. So maybe our attorneys need to talk about what a pilot would look like if we did, were to do this. And, and start from there on, on the legal side.
And that's part of that whole staff collaboration. It's not just gonna.
Yep.
It's gonna be all the various aspects of it that's gonna have to be part of that conversation to look at this issue.
I just wanna hear a commitment for us to move forward with this process, cause we've been talking about for a long time. I'm, I'm, I'm happy that we're at this point, that we have a set of questions that we need answered. I just, I, I hope it, it remains a priority for us to answer these questions so we can move forward.
I think we had a Zoom in twenty twenty.
We did, yeah.
So there, Mayor, there's a. Same issues were laid out, nothing different. This exact conversation happened in twenty twenty.
And we're here.
At a Zoom that we had.
We're here three, eight years later.
So maybe from a direction standpoint from the board, right, if the board is interested in looking into a pilot program um of maybe starting with the Martin Way Corridor, that's um.
It, it looks like it would only be section three, right?
It'd be the area between Carpenter Road and Galashi Drive.
That was going to be my next question. Does the city of Olympia, do we have, do we have UGA in that?
So first, if I could jump in.
Go ahead.
The, Grant provided a roadmap to address just your question. And you can see that, that consider the interlocal agreements. I think that the city manager, city manager Walk earlier touched on it this evening when he said this program was built to demonstrate the steps that have been leading up to addressing the problems that have occurred over the past twenty years. And that first one was the joint plan and the diversion of divisions. And then it's the Martin Way Corridor. And there is a tool called annexation that we all know about, that you get all the permitting if you annex. And so then if you don't wanna do that and instead wanna consider this pilot program, you really have to think hard as the commissioners, if you'd like to advocate your zoning code in whatever area you'd like and have it be Lacey jurisdiction and think about the folks that are applying in that area. And then if you're going to adjudicate, you're going to be adjudicating Lacey code. So just having all of those pieces in your mind as you're going forward, recognizing that the roadmap that Grant has provided in this conversation addresses some of those big pieces. And the big pieces were the joint plans and the Martin Way Corridor. And I think that Mayor Ryder hit it right on the head. Let's think about the Martin Way Corridor in a more prescriptive way and think about maybe having these conversations that are gonna be difficult. If you're gonna try and go both ways, having the city uh adjudicate the permits in the county for county folks that are applying. I get folks all the time that don't like our regulations in the county. I can't imagine the calls I'm gonna get if I'm getting calls about they live in the county, but they're doing city Lacey regulations. So just think about the larger scope and know that your staff is working on it.
If, once those development regulations get tweaked, like they're going to as part of the joint plan process, we're already gonna be hearing appeals on Lacey development code essentially. I mean, there can be pieces that, that we don't completely conform, but by and large, we will be in conformance and we will be doing that work.
Indeed.
So that shouldn't be.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I'm ready to do that. I, I'm, we, we had this conversation three, four years ago. It didn't go anywhere.
Well, it has to hear.
It has to hear.
Well, okay, we've got, we've got.
We're working towards that and.
We're making headway, but the reality is uh I think we need to let staff know we're interested in developing this uh pilot if it's feasible, if it's legal. I mean, they're, the prosecuting attorney, for an example, deputizes pri- private lawyers to do certain things that they are expert in. Well, no reason that we couldn't do something very similar to that. So I mean, if we don't get it moving and get it figured out, we'll never get there. We'll be here five years from now saying the same thing.
I'm just, I'm just, I, I appreciate the roadmap, you know, the, the current roadmap shows twenty twenty-five as a target. I just don't, I mean, that's a couple of years now. I mean, is it really gonna take two years to?
It can with all the various other work we're responsible, all the county and city Lacey staff has. And this is some of the things we have been talking about for a couple of years and also put into our two, three-year work where the council adopted last year.
For the next periodic update.
Correct. And then that's, that gets us all synced up. And now we can look at the needed issue and the annexation hand in hand and figure out what that uh really looks like. And, and all of you can be very informed of what the next steps could be.
But, but I, I believe we, we hear a direction that we need to explore.
Thank you.
The corridor, the microcosmos and bring some proposals, let it to board by.
I really think though, Robin hit it on the head. If we're gonna, if we're gonna move this direction, let's get the legal figured out, make sure it's feasible. So that we aren't spinning our wheels, having staff do a bunch of things that end up aren't feasible because of a roadblock and we might have to go to the lunch.
But the staff needs to engage the attorneys.
Well, yes.
They are the experts.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Do that first.
And they need to engage the attorneys and get to that conversation.
Get the lawyers involved, you know how long that's gonna take? You've got lawyers, you've got lawyers. Let's get them working on.
And then we'll, we'll be coordinating this with, between the city and the city staff as, as Ramal is mentioning.
Now, as we do this, usually we do like a thumbs up in direction. I'm kinda curious, are we all there?
It's pretty, pretty obvious the directions.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Okay. Let's wrap up. There's not anything else. Perfect. Seven fifty-six, your adjourn.